Let's go ahead and call to the United State Order. Let's have their roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Rodden?
Here.
Hubert? Binner?
Here.
Harton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Maxification be given by Pastor Elizabeth Cummings from the Resurrection Lutheran Church.
The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for this council and for this city. We ask you to send your spirit to be among them, guide them in the decisions that they make and in the discussions that they have. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the nice meeting with the presentation and approval of minutes of A, minutes of August the 13th, 2018. Ms. Orton?
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes of August 13th, 2018?
Second?
Motion second to accept the minutes, August 13th, 2018. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Upstain.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item one, citizens to be heard, A, Cedric County Fire Department. I don't see them.
We think we heard her going that way earlier.
I saw them earlier today, so. Item two, parole, license and bond, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolutions. A, a resolution waiving the gap requirements of KSAS 75-11120A, sub-A for the city of Hazville, Kansas. This is the same that's required by law for us to do that we have now done for several years. There's no real changes at this point. Ms. Crum?
Can I make a motion to approve a resolution waiving the gap requirements for KSAS 75-1120A, subsection A, for the city of Hazville, Kansas?
Second?
No, second to waive the gap requirements. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item four, notice of lack communications, A, governing body announcements. Anything announced? Ms. Crum?
Just some reminders, story time at the library. Every Tuesday and Thursday at 10:30. They also have the quilting and knitting clubs that you can call the library to find out the times. The next library meeting is the 30th, and that's at 7 o'clock. That's everything going on at the library. And then the fall sports, high school sports are getting ready to kick off this week. Campus will have their first soccer game tomorrow, and we'll be at home. Their soccer team's picked to take anywhere from first to second, Navy C T L Division One again this year. Football team starts Friday night, and they're actually picked to take second or third in Navy C T L this year. So there might be some exciting things happening around town with the sports teams. And then also wanted to mention on September 3rd, the campus high school student council is sponsoring a community day at Nelson Elementary to do some work on the Owl's Nest, which is the nature area that sits to the south of the building. It's being dedicated to Kim Hall. It has been dedicated to Kim Hall, and they're trying to just kind of dress it up and get some work. So anybody out there that had Kim as a teacher or their children as a teacher, actually entire family she probably had as a teacher, or anybody else in town would be interested in that. I would tell you the best way to do that would be to email Ms. Cleaver at Campus High School, and that email is L.Cleaver@usd261.com, or you can find it on Facebook. The school district has that up again as September 3rd, begins at 8:00 a.m., and there will be lunch provided. So there'll be a sign up and to bring tools and stuff, and they'd appreciate if you are SVP'd, if you're gonna come take part. That's all I have.
Next meeting, we will have the Mayor's Youth Council here for introductions and for you to meet them. We'll send you out an announcement to remind you of these four of the meeting. I've got the senior center events. Tuesday, August 28th, there is Senior Game Night from 6:00 to 9:00. Wednesday, August 29th, Panaterra Day and Big O at 12:30, costs $2. Friday, August 31st, there's Bible study at 1:00 p.m. Monday, September 3rd, they are closed, no meals. Tuesday, September 4th, planning committee meets at 12:30. And Thursday, September 6th, the steps group meets at 10:00 a.m. And if you want to play cards, they're there every day at noon, so if you want to show up. Any other announcements? Seeing that, we'll then move on to item B, the notice nation determination agreement for our public defender service. Item five, all business, we have none. Item six, other business. A, consideration agreement for public defender services. Ms. Crum?
When we go to find these contracts, do we put bids out? Do we, how do we find people that are interested in doing this and decide who we're gonna want to go with?
This one basically has already filled in for our public defender now. So we knew him, and he applied at that point. Previously, we had sent out four public defenders, and he had applied, so we picked the other one, so we went back to him, basically, since he's already been here and knows the people and court and everything.
Okay, I was just curious, because when we got this, I looked him up online and found that he did something with Hutch and stuff like that, too, but I can't find like one single review anywhere online. I guess I'd just like to maybe have some more information whenever we're getting stuff like this. If he's comfortable with being any subbed in here, then I understand that, but I'd kind of be interested to see how we...
We went further than that. We truly contacted the two cities that he is public defender for now, Bel Air and Park City, and got references from them. So we went further, basically, than that and looked at the resume as to who he truly is now and has in the past has done public defender services for. So it just wasn't that part of it.
Okay, that's why it was...
Yeah, we went further to check out his references and resume.
Okay, thank you.
So you want to approve it? We need a motion to approve that service provider agreement. Ms. Kessler?
Make a motion to approve the agreement for the public defender services.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agreement for the public defender. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move to item two, consideration agreement with aging partners, Inc., which is the friendship meals and meals on wheels that have been providing meals on wheels for us for quite a while, which is the only one that's available out there for that. Ms. Crum?
Was there any changes in it at all?
The only change was the one that our attorney made, and they agreed to the change. I can't tell you what top of my head with that.
There was an item that was in there twice, that they would do it, and we would do it. We had it taken out of our hand.
Okay. Well, there's no other discussion. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the agreement with aging partners regarding friendship meals, meal on wheels.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agreement with aging partners. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C, consideration of purchase of patrol vehicles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, before you have a memo this evening, in reference to replacing two patrol vehicles in our fleet. As of the last few years, we found the dealership, which has the state bid contract, the state bid price is the lowest bid price available per the state contract. At this time, Shiny Mission Ford still has that bid. We're looking at 2019 Ford Explorer police packages at a price of $57,639 each. Now, we're requesting approval to purchase two of those for a total cost of $57,278 to replace vehicle Ford 13 and 512 that are currently in our fleet. These are both budgeted items, and they're paid out of the law enforcement account. I'll take any questions you have.
Ms. Orton?
If nobody has any questions, I'm just gonna make a motion to approve the purchase of the two 2019 Ford Explorer police package vehicles for the amount of $57,270 each.
Ms. Crum, question?
Yeah, I do have a question. In the past, when we've done a lot of these, I mean, the mileage has been like over 100,000 pretty commonly. Do we have a basis on mileage? Because 64,000 miles on a car nowadays doesn't really seem like that much.
And what we're doing is we have a replacement claim in place where the vehicles are replaced in certain intervals. These two are up to be replaced next. We're looking at how we'll dispose of those vehicles. In the past, we've just sent them to auction, which, customarily, at auction, we don't get a whole lot of money for the vehicles that we send over there. This time, we're looking at alternatives as far as trading them in or selling them through other means. So the resale value that the city can get back, that we can recoup when these vehicles go out of service, is gonna be better this way than if we mile them out to 150,000 miles and then we can't get $500 out of them. So that's what we're currently working on.
And this is what we've found, is also indeed maintenance starts increasing considerably.
Okay.
You're correct, it is a lesser...
I was gonna say, because I remember we've done cars that have had 164,000 miles on them before.
We have, we have, and like I said, the maintenance costs start to, there's a balance in there when you get to a certain mileage that they're in the shop all the time for maintenance, we're spending a lot more on parts and maintenance, and our mechanics have them down all the time as opposed to, once they hit a certain mileage, we can trade them out and move on with new...
You know, are the new maintenance schedule we have, is it gonna be doing, is it gonna end up being more like this with 64,000, 65,000?
The mileage is gonna vary on the vehicles, just depending on how much they're driven, who they're assigned to. Our school resource officers would put less miles on cars than officers on the street would. We try to rotate the vehicles through the fleet, so that way they don't all have miles put on specific cars. So we try to keep them balanced as much as we can.
Okay.
Ms. Orton?
Well, I just kind of answer Mr. Crum a little bit. As a law enforcement officer, our vehicles, yeah, you say, well, it's only got 63,000 or 84,000 miles on it, but a lot of times those vehicles are started...
I know they run a lot.
And those things will run sometimes 12, 15-hour shifts, and you never shut them off. Back when I first got on council first time, we started putting, we still put Hobbs meters on them, right?
They come with the hour meter on them.
They come with the hour meter.
They're current with those.
It was totally amazing how many hours those engines were running. The cars didn't have that much mileage on them, but the engines had ridiculous amount of hours on them, and that's...
I was just noticing the 64 was just a lot less than what I'm used to seeing. That's why, I was curious.
You're absolutely right.
We hope to be able to get a lot more money out of them. Okay.
We had a motion and a second. Let's have a call question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item D is consideration request for purchase and installation of cured-in-place pipe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you deny it, is in agreement with the Sincheform Technologies for the purpose of installing cured-in-place pipe in our sewer system. For those of you who aren't familiar, cured-in-place pipe is inserting a liner into the sewer pipe. It is then inflated. It is allowed to cure, and the sewer taps are then cut out from the inside. Customers are typically without service for three to four hours while they're performing the work, and the contractor is responsible. It came out to the homeowners. We've performed CIPP since 2011. This has drastically improved the reliability of our sewer system. This year, we're proposing to line approximately 6,500 linear feet. The contractor anticipates a start date in 30 to 45 days. This agreement is for three years with slight increases in 2019 and 2020. The city does have the option of not renewing after each year without a penalty. I'm seeking approval on the amount of $154,061.36, which includes a 1% performance bond, and this is a projected or budgeted project. I can answer any questions if you have any. There was a map in the packet as well.
Ms. Kessler?
What is the 1% payment on performance?
Basically, it's like a surety bond that's required for them to satisfactorily complete the project by the agreement. So something that we've made them? Yeah, it's kind of, they're required to get the surety bond, they pass the cost on to us.
Ms. Orton?
Tony, on this map, you got the, all of the red is the red, is what we're proposing to redo.
Yeah, you see like the line's black and white, but there should be green circles, white manholes, and then the red lines should be the sewer lines that are being CIPPed.
Okay. Well, that's a lot, that's a lot of mileage, or a lot of yardage of putting in. I was just kind of curious if that's what they...
And I can't stress enough how much this is actually ensuring the reliability of our sewer system. When I started here in '08, we were getting numerous callouts a week on sewer callouts and stoppages. That has dwindled dramatically.
Ms. Crum?
Say this is like over three years, does that mean they're gonna do this over three years, or every year we're gonna give them?
This project, the map that you guys have, is this year for 2018.
Okay. You were budgeted 177, and this is about 20,000 less than that. Was there not another one that we could have got put on the map?
So what we do is our wastewater superintendent outlines the area, gets the measurements in the field, and that's submitted to them. They base their proposal based on what they think of runs they can do. If they can only do a 200-foot run, it's gonna cost more. If they think they can do a 600-foot run, it's gonna cost less. So those type of things, we don't know going into it. There is some abnormal condition that can happen at times doing this project that may inflate the costs as well.
Okay.
I think we're looking at next year maybe doing like a secondary area, if there's money left over to kind of address it that way.
We don't ever have money left over. You want to approve? Ms. Kessler?
Make a motion to approve the request for the installation of the cured-in-place pipe.
Second.
Motion second to approve the expenditure for the cured-in-place pipe. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item A is a consideration approval of paint tonight temporary spatial event permits application or consumption of alcohol. You have two that, in front of you, that's going to be doing at the activity center. Anything you wanted to add, Georgie?
No.
No? Okay. So this is the usual we do in the paint tonight, as we have done in the past, basically showing just inside of the activity center. You don't, since there is no sale, we don't have to do any public carrying or that type of thing. So they're basically the same that we have done in the past years. One, Mr.?
Rodden?
If anybody has any questions, I say we consider to approve the paint tonight temporary permits for, hang on a minute, this second here, September the 17th to January the 14th of 2019. Second.
Is that both of them? Are both of them?
That's all I have, two.
You didn't say through, right?
Yeah.
Okay. No, there's actually five.
We'll get to those in a second.
Okay, sorry. Yes, those two.
They're in a different place.
Okay.
Sorry.
Ms. Kessler?
That was my question, because I'm more in here than just those two's.
Yeah, there's three that's gonna be over to community building. I wanted to do those separately, so. Ms. Binner?
Is the September 17th date, 2018?
Yes.
Just in a few days here.
Yes.
And the January is 2019?
Yeah.
We have 2019 for both of them?
Yes. I amend my motion if you...
To what?
I amend my motion to approve September 17th of 2018 and January 14th of 2019.
Okay.
Do we have the...
I'll still second that. Okay.
So we have second, motion a second to approve both of the paint tonight at the activity center. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Now you have three that's going to be done over at the community building and not the activity center, which is the same thing inside of the community building itself. And again, they'll be done, being done by the activity center staff is the one that's asking for those. What are the dates of those?
October 4th, November 8th, and December 6th.
Ms. Barton?
I make a motion to accept, yeah, accept a special permits for the paint tonight, October 4th, November 8th, and December 6th for the community building. Second.
Motion second to approve the paint tonight at the community building as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item F is the exit interview draft policy. You've got before you now the policy, but you also have the other forms and there that staff has put together, the interview, policy of language, procedures, and the information that they've given to you. We're presenting it to you tonight if you're wanting to have questions on it, or if you're wanting to pass it to you. If not, we would truly just give it to you for information, giving you time to really look at it and go further with it. But we'll still open the floor for questions or discussion about the exit interviews draft policy. Ms. Crum?
Say, if we were to implement this as we got it, because the assistant city clerk would do it, would we need to go into anything and adjust anything on the job requirement for that position?
We truly have to make changes to the personnel policy itself if it don't happen. This map goes with personnel policy, which means we have to make whatever that is at that point. So yes, there have to be adjustments made to the personnel policy. Okay. Ms. Kessler?
I was gonna say, I like the light red, I like the flow of how the process works through the staff.
Ms. Orton?
Well, I'm just gonna put my two cents out there on this. Years, a long time ago, I, myselfly as a supervisor, I do not see any benefit of a exit interview because 90%, less than 1% actually, of people that when they leave will not give you an honest answer of why they left. I've been in management for quite a few years. When I worked at Boeing, we did away with the exit interviews because, here again, like I said, we did away with it because nobody was honest with us of why they were actually leaving. You get all kinds of excuses. You get excuses of, I, you know, I got a better job, I got better pay. It's just, my two cents worth is just a waste of resources.
Other discussion? Ms. Crum?
I say, I kind of look at it a different way. I think we should go back to doing, and I think it would help us not get behind, because in the past, I know sometimes we'll look and realize that some of our staff's way behind what other cities around us might be getting or something like that. And if we did exit interviews at each thing, and we had people that were leaving, that were being honest, well, I left because I got more money to go here, and we started seeing a trend of that, we could look a lot quicker to see, to make sure that we were keeping up with other cities around here. I guess I kind of look at it like running a business. If you've got Targets hiring for a lot more money than Walmart, and all of a sudden everybody's leaving Walmart to go work at Target, then Walmart's probably gonna have to do something. I want us to make sure that we keep high-quality people in positions in all of our departments, and if it has something to do with pay, or if it has something to do with what is their job requirements here as compared to somebody else, if it has to do with the management over an area, if it has to do with supervisors, if it has to do with council, if it has to do with anybody, it's just a good idea to see if you can get a trend. If people are being, if you don't believe people are gonna be honest, then your reasons will probably be all over, all over the place, and you won't be able to see a trend. But if there really is something going on, you probably would be able to find a trend. And I just think it would help us stay on top of things and would make us run better and probably be able to keep employees here longer. I know we do a great job with that anyway. We've got great longevity in all of our areas, but we're struggling in one area right now. And I am at by no means just pointing out that area, because I think we need to do exit interviews in all areas of the city. And, you know, I had suggested perhaps Will should do it. I kind of like the, this is even a better idea, because this is somebody that I think people would probably be more comfortable talking to, somebody that's not in a supervisory position per se, and I think you'd probably get more honest answers than this. So I kind of like this, the way this is written, I would kind of like maybe take another meeting to let everybody else look at it and decide or think about it unless somebody would like to do something with it tonight, yea or nay. I'd be open for either, but I think it's a good idea for us to start looking at this again.
Any other comments, Council? No, see any, if you would like to pass these, we need that motion. If you want to table it some next meeting, we can do both of those. Ms. Crum?
I can make a motion to table the exit interview discussion or decision until the first meeting in September.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to table the exit interviews policy? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rodden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Be back on your agenda for action then next meeting. Item seven, department reports, A, mayor's right of services.
This Friday, County Commissioner O'Donnell will have office hours at City Hall from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And the next Kids' Day at Historic Hometown Market will be Saturday, September 8th, so that'll be prior to the next council meeting.
So that'll be prior to the next council meeting. So if you have any kids, get them out there on that day from 8:00 to 11:00 AM.
And we're going to be closed?
I was going to do Janes if you called me.
Oh. Janes.
We will be closed Wednesday, September 3rd, Labor Day. Thank you.
Okay, we're down chief.
We won't be closed on Labor Day, so call 911 if you need the police. If you have any other issues in the city, you can call our non-emergency number at 529-5912 if you have a sewer backup or water problem. Our visiting officer this evening is Lieutenant Kevin Sexton. He's been with the department for about 19 years. He is currently over our investigation section, so say hi to him as you go by out there. One last thing, and I'll mention it at the next meeting, too, but our coffee with the cop, the next one is at Campus High School. It'll be on September 12th at 7:00 in the morning. So feel free to come up there and visit us and have coffee and whatever else it goes. Thanks.
County Public Works?
On this Wednesday, August 29th, the Water Department will be placing a flow meter on a main distribution line next to the water plant. This will require water to be shut off to Fourth Street between Turkle and Van Arsdale and three properties on South Main. We intend and hope to have the water back on in no longer than four hours. We have hand-delivered letters to all the affected properties. Of course, if anyone has any questions, they can give our office a call at 529-5940. Also, the chief stated, public works will be closed on Labor Day. You can reach us for any water or wastewater emergencies at Hesitable Dispatch at 529-5912.
And Georgie's in everything. Recreation, Georgie. Item A, appointments. We have none. Item nine, officers to be heard. Anyone that would like to come forward and speak to council now is the time. Seeing no one, we'll move on then to item 10, executive session. A, execution regarding non-elected personnel not to exceed 15 minutes to include the attorney, chief, and Will. For, again, discussion of non-elected personnel. Ms. Kessler?
Make a motion to enter into an executive session for non-elected personnel not to exceed 15 minutes, the city attorney, chief, and Will.
Second.
Most second to approve the executive session. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We call the correct order. There was no binding action taken in the executive session. Item 11, bills be paid. A bill be paid for the last half of August. The Zebra's not here, so...
We were all looking to see who...
Ms. Gordon?
I make a motion to pay the bills for last half of August.
Second.
Most second, pay the bills last half of August. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Well, Senator General, we have nothing. Item 13, council concerns. A, council concerns. Mr. Crum?
Couple, one, this is usually the beginning of the year when I start telling people, please slow down in your crosswalk areas around the schools. I will say this year's actually been dramatically better than it has been in the past. Police have been doing a really good job of being over there. I've only had one person run the red light this year and actually they got a ticket. Or at least they got pulled over, I'm sure it got a ticket. And I'm still having a few people speed through, but not near as many as in the past. And still seeing a lot of people that text and drive and that just, you shouldn't do it anyway, but don't do it in the school zone. I mean, there's just way too many kids, too much stuff can happen. Just please don't do that. And the other thing is, I'm going to touch this really quickly, a story that came out of the Eagle about the water. Let people know there was a pretty big mistake in that story. They were talking about something that should have been like two parts and it was really 49 parts in this one well. That was not accurate. The chemical that they found, it was at 49 parts per million. FDA says it's okay up to 70 parts per million, so it wasn't even over what the limits are. They did have one thing in their well that was over what the recommended limits are. The recommended limits was two parts per million and theirs was 2.5 parts per million, so it was over, but it wasn't over by very much. There is going to be kind of, a news release was put out by KDHE and I'd imagine the city will probably share some of that. Just know that 209 out of 211 people that were not in the city limits who were affected by their water wells by this plume have been hooked up to city water and they have clean drinking water now. And just kind of want to get that cleared up. It did not affect the municipality's water and it never was in danger of affecting the municipality's water.
The article also stated that the city knew previously, which we did not know. We were not informed by KDHE until 2017, basically, when they started coming in wanting to do more probing, and that is when we truly put them and asked them for sure what they were doing.
According to the information I got, too, they said that they found it on, for sure on July 17th, they realized it was moving a different direction, they thought, and they notified the people and started giving drinking water on July 18th, so...
Ms. Kessler?
Chief, with the schools now making all the kids walk that are less than two and a half miles, like Freeman, because they used to all be bussed down, now they almost all walk there. Of course, on the west side of Marden, you know, they have a sidewalk to go down. But on the east side, there is no sidewalk, so they have to go to, go up to Grand, across Grand. I know there's school employees out there that cross the block. Have you seen any concerns with, you know, kids crossing Marden, maybe like Second Street